So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Scott Kinter?
Yes.
And Town Staff, when I call your name, please respond. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And for anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond. Michael McNiff?
This is Bob Griffin. Mike's expected in my office any minute now.
All right, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Sawyer here. I don't see Steve yet, but I think he'll be joining us with Gage Foley. He's also.
Yeah, Gage is a maybe, but Steve will be here.
Okay, thank you, Martha. And Ian Burns from MVPC. I don't think Ian is with us yet, but we're anticipating him, correct, Martha?
Yes, he'll be coming in later in the in the meeting after.
Okay. And Steve Manjoe? Steve, you're here?
Yes, I am.
All right. Good evening. This January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the Governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty, until March thirty one, twenty twenty five. This order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http backslash backslash zoom.us and entering meeting ID number eight three two seven one four nine seven one four one three zero five six, passcode one zero eight seven nine zero, or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. This meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom in at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone hit star six to toggle mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with your tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. But there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his or her representatives the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. So that all said, turning to the first item on the agenda, it is the December twenty twenty three financial report. So the following payroll and invoices were authorized. A payroll warrants for the Planning Director and Assistant Planner, PR twenty four dash twelve for the pay period ending twelve six twenty three, and PR twenty four dash thirteen for the pay period ending twelve twenty twenty three. Planning Board stipends, PR twenty four dash thirteen for the period from July one twenty twenty three through December thirty one, twenty twenty three. Or Planning Board expense invoices, Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for twelve twenty twenty three. Under escrow accounts, Joseph Suetka Engineering Peer Review, fifteen Coleman Road OSRD, twelve twenty twelve four twenty three. This is relating to Zenko LLC, care of Tom Zarico, fifteen Coleman Road OSRD. So that concludes. Next item on the agenda are liaison and meeting reports. Martha, anything for the Select Board?
Yes, the Select Board met last week on the on the tenth, which was Wednesday instead of the usual Tuesday meeting. Most of the business, there are a lot of business license renewals, but a couple of other items, Jonathan Temple, our IT Director, provided an update on planned refresh of our IT systems. And I was able to report that MBPC on our behalf had submitted our Green Communities designation application. So we should be hearing from the state on that in a couple of months. They also held an executive session that night and they held a second executive session on Thursday.
That it, Martha?
That's it.
Thank you. For the ZBA, it's very short. They have their regular monthly meeting tomorrow night, and the only item of note on the agenda is they'll be reviewing the decision, excuse me, on the Sunset Club special permit modification. Conservation Commission, what do you have anything?
Yes, they met last night and there was a continuance on three thirty third Street per driveway on Plum Island. There was propane tank proposed that, I believe it's eighty four Boston Road, which is the construction across from construction company across from the dump. And that was for in-ground propane tank. That was approved. And then there was, at the end of the meeting, there was a discussion on some of the rule changes. DEP is looking to do, and there's going to be three or four workshops, well, three or four meetings that they're going to discuss. The changes, one of them being tomorrow night. And I'm waiting the link and planning on participating so I can give you more information on that. Unless Martha knows more.
No, I don't.
So yeah, I'll keep you updated on that. That there's going to be three or four meetings in the next month or so. And that was it.
Woody, I actually just have a really brief like add on to your comment, which is that the new regulations that are under review and their public hearings over the next month are are really exciting. They actually are incorporating some resiliency into the wetlands regulations, and by which I mean looking at new precipitation data that identifies the reality we all have witnessed over the last few days, which is, you know, the way the climate is changing, there are really intense storms that happen very quickly. So the regulations are looking at, you know, updated data related to precipitation. And they're also asking for all applications in vulnerable coastal areas to include data and application information that addresses sea level rise onto into structures. So actually looking at projection data related to the change and flooding vulnerability for certain sites. So it's it's been waited for a long time, these these proposed changes, and I think there are lots of different opinions about it, but it's actually, it's it's pretty interesting to take a look at. I can share that and I know with the town being sort of in between conservation agents, I'm not sure if the information's up on the website yet, but I can work on Martha and I can work on getting links up on the town website as well.
Okay, thank you. And if you, will you plan on attending the meeting tomorrow night? Kristen?
There was an info session today that I I had double meetings, but I actually sat, listened to about twenty minutes of it, and it was recorded. I'm not sure about the meeting tomorrow night, but it might be, I think they were trying to do a daytime slot and then an evening slot for the same info session. So I'll take a look at that and can share that.
Okay, I'm awaiting the link for tomorrow night, so I, that's why I asked.
So that's a Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow night?
No, it's part of the information session, so. The Conservation Agent said, Sam said she sent me a link.
Okay, we good? No, thank you, Woody. Thank you, Kristen. Next is the MVPC. Martha, do you have anything?
A few things. Excuse me, the December meeting was held on the fourteenth. And that included some regular business by the commissioners and then an open house for the commissioners and planners to each of the program. Managers and their staff hosted everybody in their respective areas and had some refreshments, some of which were related to their particular things, but also some things on display about the work that they're doing. And it was an opportunity to chat informally with all the staff, and it was it was really a nice event. It was the second time that they've done that. So it was a great way to start the holiday season. There is no Commissioners' meeting this month. I guess their agenda was very light, so they decided to combine everything in the February agenda. There will be a planners' meeting next week on the twenty fifth.
Thank you, Martha.
I think the focus of that meeting is going to be transportation.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are two concurrent public hearings, but this is scheduled for seven fifteen, so I've got to wait just another minute, seven fourteen now. And I don't think we have enough time to get into anything else on the agenda, so if you just be patient, we'll get started on those just as soon as we can. Amazing how long a minute seems, doesn't it?
It's only sixty seconds.
I know.
Woody, just to follow up on that, if you, I wish we had the chat function. I just put the link in the Zoom, but if you go to mass.gov/regulations, like forward slash regulations, you can get a list of the different info sessions and there's a link to sign up for the Zoom. But I'll send it around by email as well, but if anyone listening is interested, just go to mass.gov/regulations and search for DEP Public Information Sessions.
Thank you so much, Kristen. You've filled out my minute for me. Thank you. So it's seven fifteen, so we can get into the first public hearings on the agenda. These are concurrent public hearings continued. These are one seventy Orchard Street map, R twenty lot forty three A, the owner applicant, the estate of Louis Bulgares, care of Diane Yerkovich. First public hearing is a definitive subdivision plan and application for Fields Way, one seventy Orchard Street, continued from December twentieth, twenty three. And the second is a common driveway special permit application for common driveway serving two lots on proposed Fields Way subdivision, one seventy Orchard Street, continued from eleven fifteen twenty three. That this hearing was not opened on twelve twenty three, twelve twenty twenty three. Look at that. It was continued to tonight. There was no discussion or test on December for lack of a quorum. So I want to open the subdivision and common driveway special permit hearings. And just a reminder, this these applications have a complicated procedural history. So the only members eligible to vote on the subdivision application are myself, Pete, and Woody. And the only members eligible to vote on the common driveway special permit are myself, Pete, Woody, and Mary, although all the sitting members are certainly welcome to engage in any discussion. And I also want to note for the record that the applicant has provided an extension for time of action on the subdivision application to February twenty eighth of this year. So let me turn to the applicant. Bob, any updates for us?
We have had a little back and forth with Martha over the last couple of days on some minor comments to the to the documents, but no, no significant changes, I don't think.
Okay. What about board members? Pete, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
You've been on it this time. Thanks.
No, okay. Woody, anything at this point?
No. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, Mary, how about you?
Not now. Thank you.
No. And Scott, do you have anything, any questions or comments?
No, I don't, Larry. Thank you.
So I think probably the next step would be to review the revised draft of the subdivision decision. We've seen a previous draft, but we've got some updates that I think Bob had referenced. Martha, maybe you can put that up on the screen?
Yeah, so are you able to see that?
Yes.
All right, so I'm unless somebody wants me to, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I'll just kind of highlight the the changes that were made from the discussion last time. And Bob had also sent me a few changes which have also been incorporated into this. The first one in the the project description were some comments from Chris Lapointe at Essex County Green Belt to add the words conservation and open space to the word agricultural referencing parcel A and to note that it will be an agricultural management access easements and a public easement will be granted across Fields Way to access parcel A. The second one, we had a blank last time on the length of the common driveway, and we've added four hundred and seventy feet, and that's actually, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, that's that's from the beginning of the driveway at the end of the cul-de-sac to the very end of the hammerhead, which is on lot far four.
That's correct, yeah.
And I also added, just noted that there's a hammer hammerhead turnaround at the end. We hadn't included that previously, but that was per discussions with the fire department. Going down, there were some updates on the revision dates for the various documents, and Bob actually sent me the list of the last revision dates for each each of these particular plan drawings or drawings within the plan set. So I've added those here. And this will be finalized once, you know, once the the hearing is done, if there are any other any other drawing changes, those will be noted there. Bob sent me a correction on figure one, adding the date November fifteenth, twenty twenty three, and for SK two, August ninth of twenty twenty three. I'd had another date on that, a subsequent date, but Bob reminded me that that was just a submission date. It was not actually the drawing date. Under the procedural history, I added a note here, just the the procedural history was that the two public hearings were running in tandem concurrently, but I did note that on September, on December twentieth, only the subdivision public hearing was held. And I'm continuing to update the dates of the the public hearings as we as we go forward. Yeah, we talked about this last time. Sort of just the general language regarding guarding the easements. The HOA Trust Declaration of Trust and Restrictive Covenants and what they should cover and that these would be submitted prior to issuance of the first building permit as opposed to prior to occupancy. Going down, under prior to occupancy, Scott had had a concern about the provision regarding utilities, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, I think your concern was it sounded like all of the utilities for everything needed to be installed and approved prior to issuance of the first occupancy permit. So I suggested some changes to say that all the utilities serving the structure for which the occupancy permit is being sought need to be installed, inspected, tested by inspected by the Board's review engineer. And Bob had had a concern about the language approved by the Board prior to application for an occupancy permit, because as he noted, it's not the Board's expertise. But I think the meaning of this is actually that, you know, the Board needs to be satisfied from the engineer's report that these have been installed appropriately and satisfactorily, and then can approve release of the occupancy permit. You know, to the building commissioner. So I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on that or if that seems to.
Did someone have a question?
So any?
Martha, you? Oh, okay.
I'm muted.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Scott?
I said Bob Griffin's on mute.
Yeah, I was just listening. No problems.
Okay. So Bob, are you all right with this staying the way it is? Or do you still feel that there should be some change?
I wasn't trying to, you know, change the way you always do things. If that's, if this is the way it's normally handled, that's fine. It just struck me as a little odd, that's all.
All right, then if it's okay, I'll move on. The next one was, we had talked about running this paragraph on parcel A by Essex County Green Belt, so we did get input from Chris Lapointe, who made some changes to reach a be conveyed to a nonprofit land conservation organization together with a perpetual agricultural management access easement across lots three and four as shown on the plans and public easements across Fields Way to access parcel A. So those were the changes that he recommended.
Actually, Martha, can I jump in here with a couple of questions? I actually probably should have brought up earlier, but when do you anticipate the transfer to Essex Green Belt? And the other part of my question is, this property is in sixty one A. So how we, when when will you deal with that? At what stage in the process?
May I answer?
Am I on?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I thank you for it's Michael McNiff. Hi, thank you, everybody. I refer to whatever Martha suggests. I think we're going to be applying for the chapter sixty one for the estate to get that out of there. It's part of part of the agreement with the person buying the property. I don't know how long that's going to take. Martha has reviewed it in some respect with me. But that's something we're going to take as to when we transfer the property. That's a good question as to when the best time is for that. And I, off the top of my head, haven't got a good answer. Any discussion? Right to?
I almost would prefer it not be conveyed, or at least not have the public trying to get to parcel A while the road is being constructed. I think there might be some advantage in doing it, you know, as the lots are being conveyed.
That's a good suggestion. Do we want people down there while we're trying to get the road in?
Well, I think the issue is that it won't be the public going down there, but if there is a farmer who has a lease on the land and wants to continue to to use it for agricultural purposes, you know, it might be better from his perspective, and I'm not a farmer, so I don't know, you know, not to I don't know what your construction schedule is, but, you know, not to allow it to to be fallow for a year. I don't know what expectations are.
But Mr. McNiff's been able to arrange to get the land farmed for the last two seasons, and I think we can continue to to do that. So I don't think we'll stop the farming activity during construction. We'll get the tractor down the road.
Martha, how long do you think it takes to get through the chapter sixty one for the Bulgares family?
You know, that really depends. The town has a hundred and twenty days within which to, once it receives the notice, it has thirty days to determine whether the notice is sufficient or not. If it is sufficient, they have a hundred and twenty days within which to either, you know, exercise their right of first refusal, transfer it, or waive it. So it doesn't usually take that long, but they they, you know, under they have that long.
Does the Bulgares family have to do that before they convey the property?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
I mean, I know somebody has to do it, but I'm just thinking of what the attorneys will ask.
And typically, typically, in a case like this, if there is a you know, PNS on the property, at the time that the estate actually has the PNS, the notice of intent to sell would be submitted to the town.
It'll happen pretty soon.
Yeah, so I would say that would happen pretty soon. If it went five months, it certainly could be allowed. We, they, I would suggest to them that they allow Mr. Herrick to keep it going, because it does look, it looks better when it's farmed than when it's, I assume when it's not, unless there's construction going on.
All right, well, it's something to think about.
Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, maybe? Would that be fair? You're going to get the road in to a degree before and establish a bond before you're going to get a building permit.
So it's not something that you've had any any discussions with with Green Belt about in terms of timing of conveyance?
No, have not, no.
So I guess, yeah, so I guess that's the important point of this discussion is where you stand with that conversation with Green Belt.
We have just been following the lead of the Green Belt's attorneys, boarding. We've been agreeing to all their easements and everything like that, so if somebody has a good suggestion, I suppose the the cells are open for them. I'm hoping we don't, we don't leave it open for the day. So is there something that we can caption in there that protects the Board and the Green Belt? You know, there may be.
How about just that? I get a good idea. At the conveyance, when the property is conveyed? How about that? I mean, when the estate sells the property to the developer, why wouldn't they convey it the same, convey the property with all the easements? They're all going to be recorded, right, Bob? Convey it to Green Belt at that time?
Oh, yeah, because we haven't seen, we haven't seen a purchase and sale agreement or anything. At least I haven't. And I don't think you have either, Martha. Have you?
No, I haven't.
No. We can forward that tomorrow. That that's easy. Well, that that might be a starting point, at least for discussion, and we can talk to Green. Well, that, that might be a starting point, and at least for discussion, and we can talk to Greenbelt and see what they're comfortable with. That makes sense? All right, unless any of the, uh, members have any questions on what we've seen up to date, Martha, I think we can probably continue on.
Okay. So going down to, um, paragraph J, screening. I did hear from both Michael and also Mr. Strazula at 172 Orchard Street that they have reached agreement that four trees will be planted as a buffer between the subdivision roadway and the property at 172 Orchard Street. So, yes, they, they talked about either pear trees or hemlocks. So I've just noted here as agreed between the applicant and the owner of 172 Orchard Street and as, as approved by the board, because the board will also need to be, you know, approve whatever is decided. And I will say, hopefully you're not thinking Bradford pears, because those are, those are soon going to be listed as invasive species or, or prohibited trees. So, you know, we'd really be looking for, for a native, native tree of some sort.
Yeah, he, he, he was preferring hemlocks at the time. I, I said, whatever you want, Mr. Sizella, or whatever, you pick. And he said, I like the hemlocks. I said, that's fine with us. He has some beautiful trees up there. I forget what they're called, fruity trees or some name, but juicy trees, something like that.
Um, and I think you noted, I've, I've yelled here, um, we still had a question about any screening between the property and 168 Orchard Street. And I think at the last meeting, you mentioned something about maybe a fence to be installed. So I didn't know if there's any other, any other language to be included in this particular paragraph regarding screening.
Uh, we just told them that we would pave his driveway and, uh, which I put in writing to him. He, I, his note back, I hope it was suffice, that was the best he could do, uh, and grant him the easement onto the property, onto the homeowners.
Okay, so nothing, nothing in addition about screening or planting.
No, we're, we're going to put a fence up anyways, but it was, if you want to have it in there, that's fine with me. But I don't think it's on any written agreement with him.
All right, and I'm afraid I can't remember. Is it, is it shown on the plan?
The fence, I don't think so. No, I can see. We were doing it not to look at his stuff more than him not to look at us.
So is, just for clarification, is the intention that there will be a fence put up?
Yes.
Okay. That answers the question, Martha.
Yep. All right, so I'll just change that to say a fence will be installed.
Yes. And driveway to be paved, you put that, because that was, that's on the plan.
Right, that's not part of a screening.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, the next item on easements, we had talked about having some general language, um, draft easement documents for each of the easements within the subdivision, including but not limited to utility easements, drainage easements, the easement for the benefit of 168 Orchard over Fields Way. The landscaping easement, I had this wrong on the last version, the landscaping easement on lot four for the benefit of lot two, the easement for the pocket wetland on lot four, and the agricultural access easements on lots three and four shall be submitted to the board for review. Is there a question?
Just copying.
Okay, um, and going down to Q, stormwater management, Bob had noted last time that it should say pocket wetland instead of, uh, pocket wetland construction instead of infiltration in number one. And then there was discussion last time about any changes to the qualifying previous areas. So Bob suggested the language here in red, modification of qualifying previous areas and associated, associated stormwater management by a lot owner requires prior written demonstration by Massachusetts professional engineer that one DEP stormwater management guidelines will be satisfied, and two, that such modification will not increase the rate or volume of stormwater runoff to other properties. Um, I added K here, um, we noted this at the last meeting, um, about interim record drawings that need to be submitted. And, um, that was it for the changes.
One last thing, Martha, back to screening. Just, you might want to eliminate the question mark after installed, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I crossed that out just so, you know, that'll flag it for me, but yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
See. So any, anything else?
Just, Martha, at the bottom of K, where you have, um, uh, shall be submitted, and the, the last bit there, shall be submitted to the board for review. Should perhaps that read review and approval?
Yes. Anything else?
All right, anybody? Peter?
Uh, no, I just, you're just buttoning up the, uh, the 61A, uh, plan and, uh, what's going on with Greenbelt. I think it would just be helpful to this board.
Okay. Before Martha goes on, let me ask members again, Woody, uh, do you have anything so far on this?
No, I do not.
Uh, and Mary, same question?
Uh, no.
And Scott, same question?
Uh, no.
Okay, thanks. Martha, I guess you can go ahead, can you?
Sorry.
Did we, um, I'm sorry. So why don't we, uh, I guess turn to the, uh, we do have a draft decision on the common driveway, uh, which we've not seen, uh, before, I don't believe. You want to put that up, Martha?
Sure. So Kristen drafted this, um, and it has gone out to, I think, everybody. And, um, since it's up on my screen, I'll, I'll go through it quickly, if that's okay.
Please.
So the, the components, um, are very similar to the other, um, other one, procedural, procedural history, the order is a little bit different, for whatever reason, our templates are a little bit different. So this goes through the procedural history of the project. And again, there'll be some, um, some additional dates. Um, there is, there is a mention here that, uh, the public hearing needed to be re-noticed, basically, for lack of a quorum caused by transition of board members and the passing of one of our members. And then, once the vote is taken, that will be included here. Um, there's a project description, was it, which is a somewhat abbreviated version of the description that's in the subdivision decision, but the same basic information about the, the parcels. And information regarding the, um, the common driveway itself, the plans on which that shows up, and also mention of the fact that, um, the feasible access plan that was shown, um, you know, demonstrates that the two lots, lot three and four have, um, viable front access from their frontage. Uh, listing of the submitted materials. And I, I think they're consistent with the subdivision plan, but we'll double check that. And then the findings that the board reviewed, um, and I don't know if you want me to go through those findings.
I think we've done that already, haven't we?
We have, we have. So the board was, you know, basically in agreement that, um, all these findings were, uh, were made regarding this, the, uh, common driveway. And then the conditions of approval, uh, the special permit needs to be recorded, um, conditions of approval of other boards or agencies of the town. Uh, easements and homeowners association agreements.
Now, those, those are still a work in progress, are they not?
They are. I was just going to say, we've received, uh, we see that, we see the draft deeds for both lots three and four. We did receive, um, the agreement, uh, for the, um, sort of maintenance, um, of the pub, uh, shared driveway, sorry. Um, our police chief had requested an opportunity to review these, um, shared driveway agreements, because they're often the, uh, um, one of the things that can often cause, um, conflict between, um, neighbors. And so we've gotten review comments from her, uh, so we're ready to send it on to town council for review. Instruction hours, I believe, are the same, uh, requirement for certificate of occupancy, uh, which requires that the special permit decision and the plans be recorded and then lapse within two years.
Um, yeah, back to the certificate of occupancy, uh, no certificate of occupancy for the two single family houses shall be issued until a special permit decision, plans, et cetera, have been recorded. Should, should that be a, a certificate of occupancy or building permit?
Yeah, it's a, it's, um, yeah, it's a good question, because under the recordation, we actually have some language. And I think that this has come from, from prior, um, common driveway special permits. But we do have a condition up in the beginning that, um, no construction work shall commence on the common driveway. But it would certainly make, make sense that, um.
Those should be consistent.
Right, and this is, this is for the construction of the houses themselves, or occupancy of the houses themselves.
Right. Can we look at that other language that you were referring to?
Sure. So this says, no construction work shall commence on the common driveway until the common driveway plan has been endorsed and the plan and special permit decision have been recorded at the, at the registry. And evidence of recording has been provided to the planning director and the building commissioner. So since that's a prerequisite to construction of the driveway, um.
It's, I, it's hard to know how you construct the, and maybe you could, I don't know, construct the, the buildings without the, uh, common driveway.
Right. Right.
Uh, I don't know, Martha, what, what, what's your thinking on that? Do you want to leave it as is, or should we change it?
Yeah, I mean, in, in the context, it seems to make more sense, maybe, that it would be the building permit as opposed to occupancy permit.
I, I tend to agree.
Looking right at the whole thing here, but.
Did we say something along the lines of until the binder course for the common driveway is installed?
I was thinking the same thing.
So instead of tying it to the special permit decision, tie it to?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that, that also makes sense.
Oh, I see what you're saying, sure. So no certificate of occupancy will be issued until the binder course is down for the common driveway.
Probably the binder course and the, you know, inspection by our, you know, the town's consulting engineer, Joe.
This isn't the exact language, I'm just sort of making a note. Okay.
All right, good. Uh, good, um, Bob or Michael, anything further on this before I turn to the board members and then open it to the public?
No, well, thank you.
Uh, Peter, do you have any, anything on this, uh, on the, uh, common driveway special permit decision?
No, and I'm, I'm thank Scott's input, thank you.
No, um, uh, Woody, anything?
No, I do not, thank you, Larry.
Uh, Mary?
No, I don't, actually.
Anything further, Scott, anything further?
Nothing else, Larry, thank you.
Okay. Martha, do we have any, uh, any questions from the public?
So, yeah, I don't see any raised hands. The only written comment we had received was the one from, um, Jerry at 172 Orchard, um, confirming the agreement regarding the plantings and also saying that he supports the plan.
So I'm just looking at my notes here, and correct me. So I think where we are right now, uh, oh, Matthew, you also prepared a performance guarantee, I believe, right? The applicant has chosen a protect, protective covenant form D.
Uh, yeah, a, a performance, yeah, performance covenant form D. Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought, yeah, should be a performance covenant.
Um, and, uh, Bob or Michael, you've had an opportunity to review that, and that's the way you want to go with this?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm just, again, looking, so is there anything, we need anything further input on that at this point, Martha?
I don't believe so.
As, as you all know, the, the form of security is at the option of the applicant in subdivisions anyway. Um, so you've submitted, let's see, uh, draft deeds to lots three and four and the shared driveway agreement for review. Just looking at my notes, I believe the agreement has been reviewed by the police chief, but still needs to be reviewed by town council. So all the documents, we're looking for the HOA declaration of trust and other documents have been submitted. I think, uh, Martha, they still need a little bit of work.
Um, I believe I've gone through them quickly, um, and I, I have a, a few questions, uh, both about that and also the document regarding the easement for 168 Orchard Street.
Okay. Um, so that's still under review then, and you'll, you'll send those to town council when you're ready?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else, Martha, that I'm missing?
I think that's it. We've got the, you know, the, the draft deed language from Greenbelt, um. One of the conditions is that we'll get language regarding the other easements. So I can't think of anything else that we're, we're missing right now.
Okay, um, so is this, uh, we in a position where we should be thinking about a motion to continue, uh, the public hearings further? To a date certain?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to, you know, to keep it open and continue it until we have maybe some of the questions about the conveyance and, and, uh, 61A sorted out.
Okay. Um, all right, so what, what would you suggest as a date? On to February seventh?
I think that would be, I think that would be reasonable, and then we can clean up the few remaining items in, in these decisions and hopefully get those questions answered. We actually have two weeks between this meeting and the meeting on the seventh, so that gives us a little more time than usual. And, you know, given that we have the February twenty-eighth deadline for time for action, that we should be able to. Meet that comfortably.
All right, good. Well, we'll have to address these, these separately. You can't roll them into one motion because of the.
Right.
Who's eligible to vote. So as to the subdivision, would anyone, and anyone being Peter or Woody? Care to move to continue the public hearing on the subdivision until our February seventh, twenty. Twenty-four meeting at seven fifteen P M via Zoom.
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. And Woody, is that a second?
Yes, it was.
Any discussion? And Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And. Then as to the special permit, common driveway special permit, would anyone care to move to continue that public hearing also to February seventh, twenty twenty-four, seven fifteen P M via Zoom?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion? Hearing on Peter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so. Bob and Michael, thank you, and we'll see you on the seventh, and we'll try to keep this thing moving.
Thank you. Great, thanks.
All right. Next on the agenda is the continued public hearing for Seven Bittersweet Lane. Map B O nine lot twenty-one B, common driveway special permit application, owner David W Foley Senior and Nancy J Foley. The applicant Gage Foley. Martha, you can take that, that decision down now.
Yep, thank you.
And Steve, so. Steve, I understand that the ZBA has granted the variance. That you, you requested, but they haven't yet finalized their decision and filed it with the town clerk. Is that?
So they, the zoning board approved the decision, I believe they finalized the. Decision, I believe, Chris, I believe they're just waiting on signatures.
That's correct.
They need a couple, there's like a couple of signatures they need, then they'll file with the town clerk, so it's still not. Still not record, oh, well, then there'll be a short appeal period, then we can record it.
Right.
So we're almost, almost there.
Yeah. Yeah. Peter, do you have any questions?
I don't, thanks.
No, Woody, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you, Larry.
Mary, any questions?
No, thanks, sorry.
And Scott, any questions?
No questions, all right.
Okay, Martha, maybe we can take this opportunity to go through the findings anyway, and perhaps then we can move this on to a draft decision?
Yeah, I think that makes, I think that makes sense.
So if you could just pull up the, the common driveway special permit findings.
Yes.
I don't think we've been through those with this before, with this application.
I don't, I think we might have done with kind of the straw vote before it went to the ZBA, but we have not done it formally.
Okay. All right, so. So under ninety-seven five three, special permit required, planning board should make the following findings relative to the common driveway special permit. Martha, I, perhaps you could read this because my screen is partially cut off by the.
Oh, sure. Does it help if I move that at all, or is it?
If you can move it to, to my left, I can read them.
Let's see. I think the only way I can do that is if I. Reduce the size, is that better?
That's okay. Can everyone else see that? Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So item A, the use requested is noted in the zoning bylaw as a special permit in the district which the application is made. Anyone have any questions or concerns about that finding? All right, let me go on then. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to public convenience or welfare. And once again, any, any questions, comments on that finding? C, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
D, the requested use will not overload public water drainage sources, systems, or any municipal systems. To such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate, in the immediate area. Or any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. We all good with that?
Yep.
E, any special requirements for use as set forth are fulfilled, and we haven't talked about that. And the requested use will not, I don't think there are any special requirements other than perhaps the. The variance from the ZBA. Do I have that correct, Martha? Was there anything in particular that we wanted to add to the decision?
I don't believe so.
Nothing comes to mind, anyway. And F, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts to be detrimental. To the health, safety, or welfare of the immediate residents or the residents of the community. I'll, I'll ask everyone, are we all comfortable? We can make those findings, Peter?
Yes.
And Woody?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Scott, even though you're not voting on this, I'll ask you the same question. You comfortable?
Yes.
Those findings, as am I. Martha, do you need a motion to prepare a draft decision?
I, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, we, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing from the board is they're ready to, to make that, take that step, so. If you could do that, I guess the next question would be, when do we want to see, see them back? If. The seventh might be too soon because there's no guarantee that the ZBA decision is going to be filed and the appeal period have. Run within that period before February seventh. I don't think.
No, I think that's it. It should be signed by the end of tomorrow night, but it may not get filed until Monday, so it could be. Safer, I'm just looking at the calendar here. To do the second meeting in February, which would be the twenty-first.
Yeah, that might be the safest thing because we can't. I don't think we can finalize anything until. Until that decision has become final, the ZBA decision. So, oh, I should ask, this is a public hearing, Martha, are there any members of the public that have any questions or comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay. So would anyone care to move to continue the public hearing? Until. Our February twenty-first. A meeting at seven fifteen P M via Zoom.
I don't know.
All right, I'm sorry, who was that? Mary, did you?
Yes.
And the second was Woody, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing on Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So Steve, we'll see you on the twenty-first, and hopefully that'll. We can wrap it up.
One quick question, one quick question I have is, is there any time? I know we extended, you know, we've continued and extended, is there any time? Requirement that we have to do any documentation for Martha on this, or we, I think we. I know when we hit the. When we had to go for the variance. I, I don't know if the, with the special permit, is there a time constraint within the regulations?
For how long the, the special permit hearing can run?
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the clock kicks in if we close the public hearing, but we're not closing it.
Okay, fine, yep. Very good.
We should be good.
Excellent, all right.
And, and this should give us time to, to get the documents reviewed by council and the fire chief and.
Yep. It's. All right.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yep.
See you too.
Just be with me, there's too much paperwork here. Okay, so the next item on the agenda are the proposed amendments for the spring twenty twenty-four annual town meeting. Board to review and vote to submit to the select board to refer it to the planning board for a public hearing. Just to remind everyone that, that, that it, this is a complicated process. To get a zoning proposal on, on the annual town meeting warrant, or any town meeting warrant. And this is just one step of it. This is not a public hearing today. The goal today is to finalize our at least initial referral to the select board. Who, if they're in agreement, then will refer it back to the planning board for a public hearing. So what we see tonight is not necessarily the last version of these zoning amendments. But it's just one important step in the process so we can go forward. If sent back to us by the select board, as I would expect they would do. Then we will set up one or more public hearing dates so that the public will have an opportunity to. To weigh in on this. And. It might help, Martha, if you could put up the schedule to remind everyone where we are in the process and what our timeline is.
Sure. Oops. Lost it. Sorry, bear with me for a second. I'm sorry, this is not.
That's all right, Martha, if you just want to, if you, if you know the dates off, offhand. Or.
Yeah.
We need to do, we need to take a vote tonight in order to get it to the select board in time for them to refer it back to us in time to hold a public hearing or town meeting. At a fair statement?
Uh, yes, that's a fair statement, and it actually might be beneficial tonight to agree on a public hearing date as well because. Because of the way the, the planning board dates and the. Select board dates interface.
Okay.
So I think I've got it. Are you able to see it now?
Yes.
Okay. So we're right here on number one, which is voting to submit the zoning amendments to the select board. For referral back to the planning board, and if we can actually vote to set a public hearing date. And then, based on the board's vote tonight, we, we've already asked that this be on their agenda for their meeting on next Tuesday, the twenty-third. So the draft language with the request would be submitted to the select board tomorrow. And then they would vote to submit it back to us at their meeting on Tuesday. We've targeted February twenty-first as the date for the public hearing to open. That's partly because that would give, give us, give the board. Potentially two public hearing dates to discuss it and make refinements. The select board and the finance committee currently are scheduled to. Meet to review and approve the town meeting warrant, at least the items that are going to be on it, and I think they'll be going through the budget, financial things. So in order to meet all of that, we'd actually have to get the notice, the first notice of the public hearing in the newspaper on February fifth. We also have to notify DH, DHCD, it's now HLC, MVPC, and the planning boards of Abudding Towns. And we also need to then get the second notice in the paper on the twelfth. So under the current schedule, the select board is scheduled to approve and sign the town meeting warrant, and it will be posted in town hall on. The tenth of April, for the April thirtieth town meeting. So those are the, those are the dates that we're looking at, and certain things have to happen within a certain time. Such as when, when the planning board votes to. Submit something to the select board, then they, they have to refer it back to the planning board within fourteen days.
So the twenty-first is, is our regular meeting, I believe.
Yes.
We want to keep that night light then, if we. Go to the twenty-first.
Right, so we've got. You know, we now have Seven Bittersweet that night, but that should probably be fairly, that'll be reviewing the draft decision.
Yeah. Hey, let me ask the members, does, does the twenty-first work for you, Pete?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Yeah, be an important meeting, obviously. Woody, same question? You're muted, Woody.
Yes, that sounds great, all right.
Uh, Mary?
Yes, that's fine.
And Scott, does that, that work for you?
It will work.
Okay. Do you need a motion, Martha?
Um, I think.
Am I getting ahead of you?
No, I think it, I think it, I mean, we could do it at the end after we've gone through the amendments and, and voted. To refer or, or.
All right, maybe we can, let, let's do that. Now, just remind everyone, we had a workshop, well, let's, let's take the first item, which is. The MBTA communities. I think we have some updates from the workshop we had a few weeks ago. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we have Ian with us.
Ian here, yeah, Ian is here and Kayla is here as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, maybe just a, a quick update, and then we'll turn it over to him. As you recall, we did have our zoning workshop on January third. And we've been working with. Kayla and Ian since then. On the third, I think everybody was in agreement that we would focus on. Four sub-districts within the overlay district, two in the north and two in the south. One, one each in the north and the south, at the higher density, and the other one at the lower density. So we've been working with Kayla and Ian to sort out the parameters for those and started taking a look at the design guidelines.
Okay.
Thanks, Martha. I'm happy to take it from there, if, if that works.
That sounds great.
Well, first I have to give credit where credit's due. We've been to a lot of planning board meetings over the past year in multiple towns, and this may be the first that was exactly on time with their agenda. Moving through. The fact that you got to. Your zoning bylaw amendments at exactly eight o'clock was very impressive, so well-run meeting there by your planning board. Good to be with you all again, and good to see you all. We thought tonight we could go through a little bit of updates on the bylaw and kind of just take it. Maybe page by page, it's only about seven pages, just to take a look at. I know that it was emailed to you all just a couple of hours ago, so many of you might have, might not have had the chance to look at it much, so. Happy to kind of take our time in recognizing that, you know, this is just to vote to pass it on to your select board, and. You're going to want this to be in as good a shape as possible, but it's not going to be the final, final copy here. We want this to be in good enough shape, but know that there's going to be plenty of discussion going forward. And I, I should mention too, joined by Kayla, Rennie, also in our department at the planning commission. I think you've all met her before, so we're happy to be here, and Martha and Kristen have been doing. Great work, keeping up with us, and they've heard from us at least ten times a week, I think, over the past month, so. They're holding in there with us, so we appreciate it throughout this process.
You've heard from us at least ten times a week as well.
Let me go ahead and share my screen, if that's okay, and thought we can just kind of look at this bylaw together. Does that look okay? Should I zoom in for anyone on my screen, or is that a good size?
Fine.
All right. So, right up top, I'll kind of go through it. Kayla, feel free to interrupt if I miss anything. She's also going to be taking some notes if folks have thoughts or questions as we go through here. And of course, Martha and Kristen, let me know if I miss anything. Right up top, you all have seen this first section before. There isn't too much significant that has changed, except for. where we kind of further define the relationship between the overlay district and the underlying district. So as many of you, as you know, this is an overlay district, so we really were specifying in this establishment and applicability section that the underlying zoning still applies, and when a project comes forward, they're essentially going to choose which zoning they are proposing their project under. They'll either have to come forth to you all as calling the overlay district, or come forth to you all using the underlying zoning. So you choose one or the other there. The sub-districts themselves, as Martha mentioned, we're now looking at four. There were about five we were considering previously, but after our discussions a couple of weeks ago, we've narrowed that down. So we're looking at two in Newbury North, we're calling those North A and North B, and then two in Newbury South, we're calling those South A and South B, and the reason we're going with that, that name typology is because the As tend to be our higher density, so to speak, and the Bs tend to be our lower density, so trying to keep that pattern there for folks to follow along. I'm going to go ahead and scroll to the second page here, and feel free to interrupt me if folks have questions. Just plenty of definitions in here. We've done some minor changes. There shouldn't be anything too out of character here. A lot of it is taken from both the state's model bylaw, where they recommend definitions for MBTA districts, and then some of it is taken as well from your pre-existing zoning bylaw and what definitions you all use. A lot of this is pretty standard, and we haven't made any changes since we talked last.
Ian, I might suggest flipping eight and nine, just the numbers.
Sure.
Yeah, just because you're using one definition that's not, that's not explained yet. So eight has a definition that's not explained, but nine is
Yes. There are, so let me spell it out here instead of just saying LIP. Why don't I write local initiative program in here? We'll keep it in order just because it's an alphabetical order right now, but there are several sections in here where there may be something mentioned in a definition that's referenced in a different section of the definition, so that's not atypical, but there will be more than one place that you notice that. But we do try to not use acronyms, to your point, in the actual definition, so folks can follow along. Same with here. So after the definition section, we get into the room, get into the real meat of everything. Two different types of uses, we're saying, broadly speaking, two different types of uses, we're saying that are allowed by right. The first being multifamily housing, that is, of course, the law and the requirement, so multifamily housing is allowed by right, that's defined as any structure with three or more units. The second thing that we're allowing in the overlay district are commercial uses as allowed by the underlying zoning. So because, you know, as I said earlier, they essentially have to choose if they want to use the overlying zoning or the underlying zoning when they come forward. We wanted to make sure that if they wanted to do multifamily with the overlay district, they could incorporate commercial use maybe as a mixed-use development, if that was a preference. So we've essentially said that any commercial uses in the underlying zoning are allowed in the overlying zoning, as long as it's part of a mixed-use development.
In which of these districts have commercial uses as of right? It's just, is it South A district?
Actually, it's the North A and the South A and yeah.
The North A is part of the BLI district, isn't it?
That's correct.
And I should have mentioned upfront, it is described in there, but for everybody, for everybody's recollection purposes, the North A is what is kind of around the Route One area, those clusters of parcels around Route One. The North B is Hanover Street, next to the Newbury Elementary School. And then the South A is Kent Way, where Town Hall is, and South B is Central Street. No, yeah, Central Street, right, Martha?
Yes.
The large parcel there near the fire station. After uses, we dive right into dimensional standards. So a little bit of background here, you all have seen some version of this in the past, but as we mentioned, we wanted to envision allowing more density in some areas and less density in others. And so our As are, we envision higher density, because those locations, after discussions with you all, and actually after some public meetings as well, we felt they made the most sense for the higher density. And then the B districts are more relatively residential areas, so it makes sense for lower density. We had a lot of discussions after the planning board meeting, if you all had the workshop a couple of weeks ago, we talked about how could we potentially restrict the number of units on a site, so those lower district areas? How can we make sure that the actual structures and buildings are fitting within the character of the neighborhoods there? And so we toyed around with a couple of ideas, one being restricting the actual number of dwelling units in a structure. And then the other one being using a lot of the setbacks and open space requirements to kind of force into a lower density. The challenge that we ran into, and Martha and Kristen, feel free to speak to this if you have additional thoughts. As we start to restrict more and more the number of units on a site, we may make it infeasible for any development to happen because if a developer is going to come in, as we've kind of been talking with folks in other towns as well, it may be difficult for a developer to have an economic return, essentially, if they're only limited to putting five units on two acres. And so instead of putting an exact number to how many units they can build, we decided instead to put higher numbers on the setbacks and higher numbers on the open space and lower numbers on the stories, so that we could essentially encourage lower density without saying this is the exact limit of the amount of units you can build. So in these B sections, this right column here, you'll see that there's a good difference between this and the As, especially when it comes to the setbacks. So you're going to require sixty-foot setbacks in your rear and side yard, so that would encourage a pretty significant buffer from abutting neighbors, if there are single-family homes abutting the parcels, and a fifty-foot setback from the front yard or from the street. And so encouraging some more interior locations of development on a parcel, making sure that we're protecting kind of the sightlines from both the street and the abutting neighborhoods. The thought process here, when that's partnered with a fifty percent minimum open space in these lower-density areas, is that it's likely a lot of that open space will be reserved in those setbacks, so you can imagine more of a wooded or vegetated buffer between a developed parcel and any neighbors in the area, so that there is, you know, sightline protection, so to speak, of a future development happening. Those lower-density districts are also restricted to two and a half stories. The half-story is there if they want to put anything, you know, on the, on the top floor with the tapered roof or dormers or something of the like, and restricted at thirty-five feet, which is similar to your current bylaw. And then the sub-districts A, the higher-density ones, we haven't changed those since our last discussion, three-story maximum height, and forty percent minimum open space required with twenty-five-foot setbacks. Did I miss anything there, Martha or Kristen, that you wanted to highlight?
I can't think of anything.
No, that sounds good.
Any questions from the planning board on the logic here?
Nothing from me. Anyone else?
No.
Is the those setbacks for North B and South B, at the fifty, sixty, sixty, and sixty, are they common with, you know, some of the other towns that you're working with?
Yeah, we see, we tended to see around fifty feet for some of the more residential areas, and especially in these districts specifically, where we have very large parcels. It wouldn't be as common if we had smaller parcels that we were dealing with, because once you setback sixty feet on both sides, you're not left with a ton on a smaller parcel. But where these are relatively large parcels, it's not unreasonable to have that setback set there. Good question.
Yeah, we actually, we drew those out, you know, in these districts, just to see what they would look like, and, and, you know, in the greater scheme of things, they're, they still look quite small, but you know, they leave plenty of interior room for, for development.
Thank you.
Good question. Yep. And parking is unchanged from when we last talked. Again, that's just a minimum. They can always build more parking spaces if they want, but one space required for one bedrooms and two spaces required when you have two bedrooms or greater. The next section is an affordability requirement. We had talked about this a couple of times, so just emphasizing or requiring ten percent of all units in a project to be set aside affordable, and that's on that, what we call the subsized housing inventory, so that again, in the technical definition essentially says that incomes that are, or households that are making eighty percent of the area median income qualify for those units. That income requirement, or that affordability requirement is, starts when you have a unit or a project with ten units or more, and so there's a threshold. If you have someone come in and they're only building five units, they will not be subject to the affordability requirement. But if they're building ten units or more, they will be subject to the affordability requirement. That again, just goes back to the economic feasibility we see often. When there's only a couple of units and developers require to include an affordable unit, they might not even build the project at all, simply because it's too much of a strain on their bottom line. I'll keep scrolling here, site plan review. This is still standard from what you all have for your current site plan review. It references what currently exists in your bylaw, so they'll have to follow that site plan review process with the planning board as the permit granting authority. The additional piece of site plan review are these general design standards and guidelines. And so this is in addition, or as part of the site plan review process, they'll be required to present to you all how they are aligning with the design standards and guidelines. The design standards and guidelines are broken up into several sections. Key to them all is really this intent section, where we have this C, where we list kind of the idea of the character of the community and what types of structures we want to see developers bring forward to make sure that they're aligned with what you've seen in Newbury and communities like Newbury. Design guidelines are guidelines, they're just that. A developer does not have to come in and say that they have done every single one of the things we've laid out here. However, they will have to tell you how they have incorporated the design guidelines into their project, and if they haven't followed them, why that choice has not been made, and you all have discretion over how you can interpret some of these during the permitting process when you're talking with folks and developers coming forward with projects. A few key things that I'll mention, and I'll let Martha, I won't go through them all in detail, but Martha and Kristen can speak up if there are things they think are important to mention in addition. Number one, the open space and landscaping, this again goes back to making sure that there are some landscape buffers between parcels, but then also making sure that there's actual contiguous open space within the area, and that we are using kind of best practices in terms of low-impact design and drought tolerant and different types of landscaping features, native plants, that sort of thing, that fit with the area, and that will make sense from also a climate change perspective. We have a section on building and structure placement, essentially saying where to put the buildings and how to orient them. One of the things we've talked about that we've seen from other examples is putting large buildings behind shorter buildings if you have a project with multiple stories. So for example, at the end here, talking about multiple structures on a site, put your lower buildings behind your taller ones, so we can essentially hide that sightline and other things like trash collection and kind of different amenity features of a development where they should be put on the site. Building, massing, articulation, and architecture, this goes back to kind of what the building should look like, things like we should have pitched roofs. You should make sure that they fit with what is current designs in the community. Variations in the actual facade of the building, so you're not just looking at one big shoebox and a couple of other points there about how they should be designed. Again, they'll have to show you kind of what their thought process was with the design and how they applied these different design guidelines in an actual project. Couple notes, like building materials, or preferred building materials, so that you're not looking at plastic everywhere. Pedestrian amenities and connections, making sure that there's sidewalks and connections to neighborhoods, so that it doesn't just maybe end at the edge of the development, but can connect to other neighborhoods, and following ADA guidelines and other guidelines for accessibility reasons. And then the last section, resource efficiency, this goes back to making sure that we have energy-efficient and water-efficient buildings in the design, and incorporating as much as possible in the design to make sure that they are energy-efficient. That is the Click Notes version of this section. Happy to answer questions, or Martha and Kristen, feel free to speak up. There's been a lot of words missing about this over the past week, and so I know I did not cover all of it.
Thank you, Ian. Martha, Kristen, anything to add before I turn to the board members?
No, I think Ian's done a great job of kind of going through and hitting, hitting the highlights in the major categories.
Pete, do you have any, any questions?
First, first comment, Ian, and I can, thanks for putting this together. So on bullet point fourteen, when we first start up the definitions. I think there was a like language in there about, because I'm going to hone in on this, about solar panel design to be installed above parking surface does not count as a building structure for the purpose of this definition. So you're just talking about the pedestals that would sit in a parking lot? Okay.
You like the solar canopy?
Yeah. So as we're talking about solar canopies, and we go down a little bit further, and we're talking about solar definitions and utilization, I think it was mentioned in on their intent, under intent, under the so we talk about meeting the climate's resilience goals and covering, you know, water and energy, you know, is this an opportunity to also insert something like that in here? Because I know, I don't, I'm not sure how comfortable developers would feel about having, you know, really a strong guideline to say, hey, listen, we'd like to see this. I mean, we're talking about what the buildings are going to look like, and where the dumpsters are going to, dumpsters are going to go and everything else. I think it's a great opportunity to really say, we'd like to see something that's going to pay for itself. It's mentioned in, in, you know, at the very tail end, but it's really not promoted very strongly.
Sure. Yeah, this was something that we just actually talked about today, and Kristen and Martha, feel free to speak up, because I know you did a little bit of editing on this today as well. There's a couple of things that we're trying to balance here with it, one being that we have kind of measurable or specific things that the developer can point to, and then the second being that as with all the design guides, like I said, they're not requirements, but we can't necessarily require in terms of energy efficiency, anything more than what is required in the rest of your town right now for the law. But we stuck this in at the end, you're right, it's not emphasized everywhere, so we can certainly put emphasis in other places outside of just this number seven. I'd love feedback on where we can incorporate that. Kristen or Martha, do you want to provide any context for kind of how it came about these wordings in these sections for this?
Yeah, I'll turn to Kristen for this one.
You know, learning as we go with this, I, I think these are pretty important design guidelines and you know, as things move forward with the climate goals that the state of Massachusetts has, I think, you know, the work that's done locally will absolutely have to, you know, be a little more aggressive, if you will, in actually accomplishing things like all-electric building and solar and all the rest of it. But I think what I what I was wondering, and we've had conversations about, and then I was looking at the model bylaw related to this, is as Ian says, you can't it's not totally clear to me, even though these are guidelines, whether how far we can go with it, because there's a very clear intent with this particular law to make sure that things actually get built right, and not to present constraints that would somehow result in the sense that something couldn't be built because there are too many loopholes to jump through, yada, yada. So I, I mean, I think there are other ways, as Ian said, that the town can sort of move those kinds of issues forward, you know, the green communities that we're doing, and you know, the stretch code, some communities are, you know, enhancing, you know, not just the regular stretch code, I forgot what it's called, the enhanced stretch code. But I appreciate your point, Pete, and I, you know, I think it's, I think it's a question we can finesse a little more and, you know, look at how some of the other towns are doing it, some of the towns that have done a lot with energy and water efficiency, and see if there's some language that kind of strikes the balance.
I, I appreciate that very much, and I understand the balance, and maybe it comes in the incentive package when we, you know, buy someone to do something else. The other question I had is, did we ever find out if we could go above forty feet with our fire apparatus? Are we able to, to handle anything going up forty, forty-five feet? With our current apparatus? Was that question?
Yeah, I don't don't think we actually got that answer.
That's just the other question. Okay, thanks very much, Larry.
Okay. Woody, do you have anything?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. Thanks, Larry.
Mary, how about you?
I think this is very clear and straightforward and helpful in every possible way. Ian, thank you very much.
And Scott, anything further?
Yeah, I really appreciate Pete's, Pete's question. I was going to ask something similar. But I think, and appreciate But I think um and appreciate your comments, Kristen, um on the stretch uh or enhanced stretch, stretch. Um, I think it's uh something that the town, um, you know, should, you know, evaluate. Um, um, and potentially at some point even adopting, because that may put us in a better position. Uh, you know, moving forward with some of this. So uh, um, appreciate that and just a suggestion.
Thank you, Scott. Well, rather than have Ian and Kayla stick around for our discussion on the water supply overlay district and wireless communications, why don't we take this one on its own merit? Uh, are are we comfortable sending the draft up to the select board? Uh, Pete?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
And Scott? Good with that?
Yes.
Yeah, as am I. So would, uh, so what do you want, Martha? A formal motion to refer uh the um M M B T A Communities Multi-Family Zoning uh draft bylaw to the select board. Um, and to set a public hearing date of February twenty-first at a dates at a time certain?
Um, I think maybe we could set the public hearing date after we've gone through the other ones, but to request, um yes, take a vote to submit these, um, this amendment, the the zoning to the uh select board with the request to refer it back to the planning board for public hearing.
Would anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
True.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, uh, Ian and Kayla. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the discussion, but uh, just in case you didn't want to.
Thank you all so much. I'm sure we'll be talking again soon.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
See you, guys.
Nice job.
Okay, uh, so the next uh item proposed zoning amendment, this is the Water Supply Protection Overlay District Bylaw Amendments. Martha, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, as as you all may remember, we did talk about this um at our zoning workshop earlier this month on the third. And this was really kind of an exercise in doing some housekeeping, cleaning up some references and um, some other things which are um items that need to be addressed, but they're not critical. So in thinking about this more, um, you know, it seems maybe a little bit premature, there's more work to be done on that to make sure that we've caught everything that needs to be caught. And so it may be premature to to move that one forward and really better to focus our um, you know, our energies on the MBTA zoning and the wireless communications uh zoning to expand the tower district. So, um and I wanted to get the the board's sense on on this, whether to to move it forward or just defer it to um, an another time. We are in the process of doing a complete recodification of our zoning. We've been working on this. Uh, with town council, it's unfortunately moved along a little more slowly than we had hoped, but there will be an effort in that to, you know, to do this kind of housekeeping effort and make sure that all the references make sense and board of selection has changed to select board everywhere and all that kind of stuff, so.
Might make some sense then to defer it. So your recommendation is that we defer this to a another time?
Um, uh, yes.
Yeah, uh, Pete, your thoughts?
I'm comfortable with that. Yep.
Yeah, Woody?
Same, sounds good.
Yeah, Mary?
Sounds good.
Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, and I agree. You wanna, you need a motion, Martha, or was simply by not referring it to the select board until we accomplish the same thing?
Yeah, I think it's sufficient just not to to submit it to the select board.
Okay, all right then, so we can uh we won't take any further action on on the Water Supply Protection Overlay Bylaw Amendment uh for now. Uh, and if we can move on to wireless communications facilities?
So, um, I don't have any changes from what we discussed last time. We had talked about expanding the wire, and I can certainly pull this up again if anybody would like to see it, but we had talked about expanding the wireless tower district into the two parcels on Elm Street that are owned by Triton, as well as the parcel on High Road that's owned by the town where the Highway Barn is. And um, we had the the draft amendment language adding those those parcels to it, as well as the maps indicating where they are. And again, I'm happy to put those up on the screen if anybody would like to see them.
I don't know, is that necessary? Anyone like to see those?
I don't think so.
It's pretty straightforward. It's just identifying three new parcels to include in the overlay district. Pete, you have any uh questions or comments?
No, not at this time, no.
Woody?
No, not at all.
You good with that, Mary?
Nope.
Uh, Scott?
No.
Okay, then would anyone care to, help me with the language, Martha? Care to to refer this to the uh select board with the request that they refer it back to the planning board for a public hearing? Does that cover it?
Yep.
And anyone care to make that motion?
You got it.
Pete, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion, hearing none, then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Indeed.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, uh, the only other business on the uh, I'm this agenda item, I guess, is setting a public hearing for the um uh, the two matters that we're sending up to the select board. So you want to do them both on the twenty-first, Martha?
Yes.
And we want to set a a date, a time certain?
Yes, we have to.
Okay, uh, would, well, we have Foley at the the British Suite at seven fifteen, but seven thirty makes sense. You want to just do them for seven fifteen?
I think, um, I think it would be fine to do them both for seven fifteen.
Okay. All right, then, um, any discussion on on the suggestion? I think we actually already have discussed it. Would anyone like to make a mo- motion to set the public? I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I think the only thing might, you know, might be make a contingent on having the board, you know, the select board actually refer these back to.
Well, okay.
But.
Uh, would, would anyone, uh, would anyone care to make a motion to set the public hearing dates for the MBTA? Communities Multi-Family Zoning Proposed Bylaw and the um proposed amendments to the Wireless Communications Facilities Bylaw for our February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four meeting at seven fifteen P M. Be is um contingent upon a referral of these matters back from the select board. Does that cover it? Anybody?
Go move.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, thank you. Martha and Kristen, I I think we're good with this agenda item then?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda uh is a candidate for the Open Planning Board Associate Member seat. Uh, Steve Van Jones of twenty-one fourteenth Street. Steve? Welcome. And why don't you go ahead and, I mean, you're a familiar face, but why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself a little further, give us some of your background and tell us why you're interested in serving as associate member?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I live out on Plum Island, so I bring that perspective uh to the meeting many a time. I did send a written notice in that describes some of my previous work or volunteer work for the town. But the underlying reason why I put my name forth is that I'm interested, as always, in public service. That had been my career uh working for the Environmental Protection Agency back when I was uh unretired, shall we say. So I think that, um, given my experience living out here, having followed some of the meetings and perhaps more importantly, given these times, uh, some of my background in geology included the study of paleo climates and which gets caught up in a lot of issues that are affecting our community and the Commonwealth. So I thought it'd be an interesting volunteer job to uh take on. Uh, I realize as an associate member, one is not as intimately involved in voting on issues that come before the board, but one can contribute through thoughtful discussion to the items that come before the board, hence my interest. Um, and again, if you, I can go through uh the points that I think I mentioned in the uh letter of interest I sent to the board, but I'll have to refresh my memory. But if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to take them.
Yeah, how long did you work for the EPA, Steve?
Oh, in excess of thirty years.
Oh.
As I uh like to frame it, I came on board eight days before Reagan became president.
Okay.
So January twelfth will be a day that lives in infamy.
Uh, well, um, to your point, I I I know you you are familiar with the um responsibilities of an associate member, I assume you are, but just for any other members of the public that might be watching. Un unlike um uh, uh, an elected mem- vacancy of an elected board seat. Um, uh, uh, which is filled by a joint uh 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 meeting and joint vote of the select board and the planning board, the associate member is a purely uh select board appointment. Uh, it's done on a a fiscal year basis from July one to June thirtieth. It's not an elected position, uh, and the the uh associate member, um uh, uh, sits as a voting member only when designated by the chair uh to sit on a special permit in the uh, in the event of uh, uh, the vacancy or um uh, inability to serve of of a elected member. Um, that said, as you pointed out, it's always been the the um uh, practice with this board to include the associate member in the discussions on all matters, even though even those that uh the associate member may not be a a voting member on. Um, so with that said, Pete, do you have any questions for Steve?
Uh, no, Steve, I appreciate your um wanting to volunteer. You know, I think one of the things that's really unique about uh this board uh in particular, and actually Scott uh pointed this out when he directed the select board with the planning board is you know, this is a really cohesive board. Uh, people come come to this board and we get along well, we work together and there's no agendas. Uh, we have a, we have a mix of experience. I mean, we have a retired attorney, we have a retired reporter. Uh, we have an active agricultural individual, we have somebody active in construction, you have a retired doc, so we we're all varied. But we bring something different to the table, each of us, um, with no agendas, you know, our responsibilities to the community. And so I I think that's that's very, very healthy and that's what keeps this board a very well, you know, a very comfortable organization to work with, and that's what I've chosen with. From all the boards that I've worked with, many, many, many boards over over the years, I now select boards that work like this, and that's what I get engaged in. So that's where I'm coming from, so glad that you're you're volunteering.
Thank you, Pete. Woody, do you have any questions for Steve or any comments?
No, I don't have any questions. Uh, I think it's great that you're willing to volunteer your time towards the board as associate member and as long as your actions are detrimental to the board and you're here to work with all of us. Uh, and in the good of what we're doing, though, it sounds good to me.
Uh, Mary, do you have anything? Uh, you're muted, Mary.
I apologize.
There you are.
Thanks for stepping up, Steve. I don't have any questions.
Okay, uh, Scott, do you have anything?
No, I I concur with Pete and uh Steve, I appreciate uh stepping up, um as I'm uh new and recent, um, you know, addition to the board, um, you know, so much appreciated. Um, so I don't have any questions, uh, and uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone care to?
Uh, may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just a comment, uh, you know, I've watched the last couple of meetings, particularly since Scott has joined the board. And one of the things I found myself actually enjoying as a viewer of the board's meeting meetings was what Scott had to say from his perspective as a developer. Or and one who knows a lot about development, I felt like I was learning things by listening to what he had to say. So I look forward to that opportunity with all of you, though I've seen the rest of you many, many times before.
So, thank you, Steve. To follow up, you know, to echo what Pete said, we have a wide variety of experience on the board, and I think that's all to the good. And it's been a very collaborative group and I am confident it will continue, so. Uh, would anyone care to make a motion to uh refer uh Steve's appointment to the select board?
Sure thing.
All right, uh, uh, thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, any further discussion? And Peter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so. Steve will send this along to the select board and best of luck and uh and when we see you again, I think you may have a seat at the table this time, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
And uh, just as a heads up, I may not be at the next select board meeting, uh. I believe that's the day of the New Hampshire primary and myself and some other friends love to be in New Hampshire to observe and meet the candidates, so I will try and be present at the select board meeting.
Well, you you can actually work it out with them.
Yeah.
Uh, you get, I'm sure Martha will help you uh to get you an appropriate agenda. Sure, I'm volunteering your services, Martha, do you?
It won't be the next select board meeting anyway, because their agenda is closed.
Oh, okay.
So it would be most likely the one following that.
Very good.
If you're talking about next Tuesday.
Yeah. Thank you, just wanted to give you all a heads up.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Good luck with that.
We'll see you soon, yeah. Okay, um play, oh, I'm sorry, I must uh I skipped over the fiscal year twenty twenty-five goals, Martha.
Yeah, so um, we're in the process of developing the budget for um FY twenty twenty-five. And um, starting last year, uh, we we've always in our in our kind of letter, sending the budget to the town administrator, we've always included um, a listing of of things that are our goals. But um, last year was the first time that a a sort of more I'll say universal format was used by all the boards and committees that was actually the budget package that Tracy prepared um has has one, I can't, unfortunately can't remember what the uh association is, but one recognition as being, um, you know, an excellent budget package, which included, you know, not only the budget requests, but also the goals that uh each of the boards and departments and committees has for the next fiscal year. And it seemed like this might be a great time to kind of talk with the board about what some goals might be for twenty twenty-five since the um since the master plan is now com- complete, and that was a great, you know, a goal for many, many years kind of going on. So, um, you know, we've, we've listed some, there are goals from twenty twenty-four that are still in progress, um. Kristen, in particular, has listed a number of goals for twenty twenty-five. I can sort of go over just name what those are if you want, or we could just have a discussion, but I thought.
Martha, just just to clarify, we're talking about fiscal year twenty-four.
Fiscal year, yes, fiscal year, yep, sorry. So that'll be from July first to June thirtieth of of next year. So I don't know if there's anything particular that's been on the board's mind. We've talked about, you know, passing in it or um, developing an inclusionary zoning bylaw, um, and other initiatives, trying to encourage more affordable housing. I can throw some out that are in process, it might.
But do you want, do you want to look at last year's goals and see, would that help?
Um, sure, um, if I may, I'll just read them off rather than putting this up on the document, because it's really kind of a work in progress. But uh, last year's goals, um, the first one was developing the MBTA multifamily zoning, which we're in the middle of right now, and we'll have complete and time for town meeting. Uh, the next was something we mentioned earlier, which is the full review and revision of the Uh, the next was something we mentioned earlier, which is the full review and revision of the town zoning by law and develop zoning by law amendments. Uh, that's in process and aim to have that done in fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, any additional zoning amendments, we've talked about, um, meeting with the, the ZBA and talking about some of the things that they, uh, would like to see revised based on their experience with, with applications that have come before them. Now, we've talked about doing that in conjunction with the reclassification that we're working on with town council. Um, implementation of certain actions that have been identified in the master plan, um. One thing will be to, you know, move forward with the possibility of, of getting an implementation committee appointed. An update of Newbury's housing production plan, which is in process now and will be complete by the end of this fiscal year. Looking for grant opportunities um, and preparing grant applications, that, that would be ongoing. Uh, completing our requirements for green communities designation, and that has now been complete. Uh, one of the things that we've been talking about doing and that hasn't been done yet is just reviewing the planning board's fee schedule to see if it's consistent with other communities, it hasn't been updated for quite some time, and this would be all of our application fees for special permits and site plan review and uh, A and R plans subdivisions. Updating the two thousand and nine open space and recreation plan, and that's something that we're starting to talk about now, Kristin organized the first meeting that we've had in a long time of our open space committee and, um, had some people who were interested in potentially in, in joining, and we talked about updating the plan and what their requirements would be. So those are, those are the ones that were on the list for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and, and many of them still work in progress.
Many of them are still a work in progress.
I mean, uh, the green communities designation has been met, you said?
Yeah, that application was submitted right at the end of December, so we'll be waiting, um, it'll probably take this date a couple of months to get back to us, they may get back to us sooner with any questions regarding the application, but hopefully we'll get designation within a couple of months.
And we, uh, we hope, we hope we, uh, the MBTA communities by law will have passed by the end of the fiscal year, but there's no guarantee. So we might leave that as, as necessary, if you will.
Right.
You know?
Yep, that's the goal, to get it done.
Yeah. But other than that, I don't know, uh, any, anything else anyone would like to add to that or thinks we should add to that? Seems like a pretty, pretty good list.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a big list, it's, uh, you know, I've often found that, um, and, uh, I have a lot of experience in setting priorities, initiatives, and ultimately, you know, turning those into goals, um, that, um, you know, we, we don't want, uh, we don't want to be comfortable, yet we want to be a little uncomfortable, right, so we want to get the, uh, you know, five or six, you know, um, uh, you know, goals that, uh, we all believe, uh, you know, the team can, can, um, can hit. Uh, you know, I was just throwing it out there, uh, you know, I'd love to spend, you know, a couple of hours um, with, uh, with the planning team and any of you, if you'd like to, uh, volunteer to come in in the next week or, or two to sit with Martha and Kristin, um, and maybe lay some things out. Uh, maybe get a little deeper into, uh, what they're interested in, what I think we're interested in. Uh, there's probably a lot of line, you know, uh, just, um, just about as, as, as I've seen over the last year, but ultimately come out of a, a little workshop, um, you know, with, uh, with a list that, um, we could all be, you know, super passionate about, um, and get behind, and then we could support, uh, you know, Martha and Kristin, um, you know, at the, uh, uh, really attaining them, so I'm just throwing, you know, throwing it out there, if anybody wants to, uh, maybe come in and, uh, hang out with Martha and Kristin, maybe next week, you know, for two or three hours in the afternoon, I'm, I'm, I'm volunteering, uh, uh, so anybody else, um, I'm happy to go along, but, uh,
It's, uh,
All right, just a quick question, does it have to be a, a public meeting that Martha is proposing?
Uh, as, as long as, as long as there isn't a majority, uh, a quorum of the board present, no. Uh, I think it's, it's, it's an excellent suggestion, but I, I will say that I asked Martha earlier today when this was due to town administrator, and the answer was last week.
Well, we, we still, we, we do, I was in touch with her, we still do have time, we can submit it next week. But Scott made actually a really good point, um, that there are, you know, sort of departmental goals and there are planning board goals, and so there, you know, things that, you know, the planning department is doing, sort of a separate from what the, the planning board is doing, but, you know, talking about both and seeing where they intersect is, and where the planning, you know, where the department can support the board in terms of things that it wants to achieve. But, you know, just as an example of a few, um, you know, a few things that are really sort of planning department goals, one of, one of the ones that Kristin's put on the list, which is absolutely right, is to reactivate the border to Boston Committee and, um, you know, move the trail projects forward, and that's something that the board hasn't been involved in, but that, that, um, you know, this department and I have been heavily involved in for, you know, many, many years. We have a, a Plum Island feasibility, Turnpike feasibility study that's going on right now, that's money from uh, what's called a FLAP grant, Federal Lands Access Program Grant, that, um, Kristin in particular is taking the lead on, and, um, Newbury Port actually applied for the grant in partnership with us, but the, the funding has been awarded to, to Newbury Port. Um, but it's something, again, that we're doing in the department that the board hasn't been involved in. Doing the next phase of the municipal vulnerability program, if we want to remain eligible, we need to do what's called MVP, MVP two point O. And that's something that, again, the department took the lead on the last time, it was a very interdepartmental process. Uh, planning board was involved, but it wasn't a planning board initiative. So, um, you know, these are a few, few examples, and then assuming we get the housing production plan done, start implementing some of those uh, recommendations and actions. Um, transportation, um, there's an MVPC initiative right now called Vision Zero, which has the goal of, you know, reducing, um, high injury accidents, fatalities and things, and that's something that we've been involved in with other departments in town, but the board hasn't been, so, anyway, there's, there's an extensive list that of, of these things as well as the planning board initiatives. So I think Scott's idea is a good one to kind of talk about all of it.
Well, let, let me make this suggestion, I don't want to appoint a subcommittee or anything of that nature, because then you're subject to the open meeting law, you have to post, you have to do all of that. But I'd encourage anyone, if you want to have an informal discussion with Martha, would that be, uh, acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, anybody's welcome to come in and sit with both of us any, anytime.
Or Larry, could I throw this out?
Yeah, sure.
What if we did have a work group and we posted it, and it, it's intent was just to have this discussion that we're talking about, where these things align and where, you know, the planning board might have, like to have a little, little bit of knowledge of what the department's doing and say, hey, I'd like to jump on that, because we haven't had that opportunity.
Do I hear you volunteering?
Well, you know, I think, I love workshops and work groups, especially when, you know, we were able to have conversations. So sure.
Right, and that way we could all get together, even if there were a quorum, that wouldn't matter, right, Larry?
Well, that's right, the point is, i- if it's, if it's an appointed subcommittee or working group, uh, you become subject to the open meeting law and you do have to post, which is not the end of the world.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's just, and you have to keep minutes, and it, it just adds a little more burden, uh, you know, administrative burden.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, if, uh, I mean, what would be a, what would be a good working number? Three members? Are you, you envisioning the, the full board, Pete?
You know, I, I would open it up to the board to see who wants, who, who, you know, has, you know, time and interest in doing it and see what shakes out, have a first discussion, group, and see what the interest is like and go from there.
I think I've heard from you and Scott have an interest in doing that.
Yeah, let's go for it.
Okay.
But did you say, Woody?
I said, let's go for it, I'd be, uh, up for go- attending another workshop, that's what.
So is this, I'm, I'm confused now, if, if we have a workshop, does that have to be a meeting per se, a meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, everybody gets involved as opposed to little?
It, it, it can be the full board, it can be two members, three members, four members?
Right, but if it's three or more, it needs to be posted as a meeting, right?
It's gonna have to be posted anyway, if, if you're appointing a subcommittee
Right, 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 right.
More than one person, then it has to be, that, let's say we have three members, okay?
Right.
The quorum is two of the subcommittee. Um, but you do, you do have to post. All right, I mean, you can, you can double check with town council on that, Martha, maybe I'm being overly, uh, uh, reading too much into the open meeting law, but I believe that's accurate.
Yeah, no, I think you're correct.
I mean, it would be interesting to have everybody involved. And when we've done that in the past, you get a lot more input and it's a lot more, um, powerful having someone in that room speaking to you and speaking with everyone.
Well, the, the workshops, I agree with you, I mean, they're, they're very valuable, uh, in, in terms of that type of interaction and, and working through issues like this. Uh, we're in a more or less informal, in-person setting, and I think that's what we're talking about here. So do we, do we want to think about setting up a time for the entire board to meet with Martha and Kristin and go forward? Why not? Okay.
Yes, it's an interesting day.
Just remember that a camel is a horse designed by committee, so.
That's right.
I mean, it could be.
I see the camels coming over that hill, man.
Well, anyway, and, and that's certainly something we can, uh, we, we can, uh, we can set up, I'm sure. Um, but does that meet your immediate problem, Martha, was get, getting something to the, uh, to the town administrator?
Yeah, I mean, I think unless somebody has any, any, anything that hasn't been mentioned so far, then I, I think we have plenty to submit as part of our bucket, budget package.
Okay.
Right. And I think, you know, I think it would be great to have a conversation about all of these things, because, um, you know, if we reported on all of this stuff at every planning board meeting, the meetings would last for five hours. So I'm having an opportunity to really fill you all in on the things outside of the specific planning board stuff, I think would be great, and, and, uh, you know, also getting your involvement in some of these initiatives would be great.
All right, why don't we, my suggestion then is, why don't you, uh, you and Kristin kind of look at your schedules, see what, uh, when the meeting room might be available, and then get back to us with some suggested dates and times. Does that work?
Yeah, yep, success.
Can we, um, I, well, two, two quick things, one, I'd be totally thrilled to have these conversations with all of you, so just really appreciate Scott that you, that you brought it up and that you're all enthusiastic about it, I often say to Martha, like, you're, must be tired of listening to me, like, let's, you know, like, who else can we talk to about this stuff? And I just think it's, it is all planning, so it's, it's, would be super, super helpful, I think, to get other perspectives, um, in discussion. Secondly, just setting meetings up, um, like, do mornings work for people, is it just different every day? Next week, we have a site visit scheduled on Wednesday at one o'clock, so that's already a little extra time for folks. Is there a good time next week that we could kind of come to agree on right now?
Friday night?
I'm retired, so I'm pretty flexible, you know?
I hate nights.
And Mary hates nights, so.
Well, I'll fall asleep at five.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm just kidding.
My schedule is pretty up right now, so if you
So maybe lunch.
When it comes, when it comes to, when Martha, Kristin are available, because their schedules are
Like, would a nine AM work and we get some coffee and?
Yeah, but that's
You sold Pete at coffee, I think, right there.
I'll buy the coffee if Pete buys the donuts.
All right. What a, what a deal.
All right, well, we'll look at our schedule, but that's helpful, thank you.
Uh, to answer your question, Kristin, any day next week if that, uh, works for me, so.
I'd love to have Larry's schedule. All right, why don't we, uh,
One, one of these days.
Why don't we just throw around the, you know, some, some, some times and dates and we'll get there.
Great.
And I see Steve Manjoe has his hand up, Martha.
Yes.
You know, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think it's an excellent idea, and I'd be happy to join, but I think it'd be presumptuous in my part to be involved and pending a decision by the select board, so I certainly encourage what you're talking about doing, and I wish I could join it, and maybe there'll be more than one meeting, in which case I might be able to join, so.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm sure there'll be more than one meeting, so thank you, Steve.
Yeah, as I say, I don't want to be presumptuous, thank you.
But you are, Blant, you are. Am I kidding, Steve?
All right.
Um, okay.
So how, how'd we leave it, are we gonna pick a date or, or are you gonna get back to us?
I, I think we're gonna get back to you, but assuming that it'll be nine o'clock some morning.
Okay. Great. That's, uh, that, Martha brings us to the planning director's report.
Keep that pretty short and sweet, we've been focusing a lot on the MBTA zoning.
Yeah.
Um, so don't have too much more to report, but I, I, I do, and I'm not even sure I can give you a date on this yet. We are having our next, um, housing production plan, uh, meeting, it's currently scheduled for Monday, the twenty-ninth at six thirty at the library. And it will basically be kind of an open house with a brief discussion about demographics and then some different stations where people can talk about, um, you know, perhaps what they feel is their the greatest housing need in Newbury, probably a station with, um, MBTA zoning, um. And a couple of other things, which I'm forgetting right now, Kristin, I don't know if you remember what they are. So as soon as we have some definite information on that, we will send that out to you. I think the alternative date that we were looking at was, uh, possibly Wednesday, the thirty-first, the idea is to, um, possibly do it when the library's open and maybe have some people who are coming in be interested in actually, who are going to the library, be interested in coming into this, it'd be a situation where people can kind of come and go. But again, currently that's scheduled for the twenty-ninth, and we'll update you as soon as we can. Uh, the other thing was the, the hazard mitigation plan and, and, uh, you know, just continuing to work through that. Got an email from the police chief, um, you know, today about some of the, the issues that came up during the, the extreme flooding at the end of last week, and I'm sure a lot of communities will be adding to their current list of hazards and hazard points and emergency response based on, on what happened last week, which was just extraordinary. So that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Kristin, did you want to mention anything about the housing choice meeting?
Um, yeah, the Greater Newbury Port Housing Choice Coalition is having its third meeting, um, which is tomorrow night um, at six o'clock at the Y, and it's also available on Zoom. Um, and I can share that around as well if people are interested in that, but, um, it's Newbury Port and the surrounding towns, including Newbury, and this meeting is going to be focused on, um, actually getting to work, um, so they're interested in people, uh, sort of identifying which focus area they want to get involved in, whether it's, um, advocacy at the state level for some of the housing bills, um, local advocacy, um, for Um, for different affordable housing initiatives, um, like ours. Um, and, you know, most of the other towns have some good stuff going on as well. Um, outreach, education, um, there are people who are writing letters to the editor. Um, on a schedule now for the daily news, so some really good, um, energy going on. And it's all being supported by CHAPA, which is the Citizen Housing Association, um, has a lot of good stuff, so. You know, Newbury, I think, again, will be able to kind of, uh. Garner support for the MBTA zoning through this broader outreach network, um. Let me know if you have any more questions about it, I can let you know.
Thank you, Kristin.
Right, and just actually to, to follow up on something that I think Scott mentioned at the last meeting was. Uh, and maybe we can talk about this at our, our workshop, sort of the communication. Plan or developing a commution, communication plan and strategy for the MBTA zoning.
Okay.
For the public, uh, plan.
Yes.
To reach the public with the terminology that they'll understand.
Right, public outreach.
We want them to get.
Yeah, just helping everybody, you know, understand what the bylaw is and, and.
Right. Yep, tough job.
All right, very good. Um, anything else, any, from anyone before I ask for a motion to adjourn? No?
No.
If anyone care to move to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Scott. Any discussion nearing, and Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Productive meeting.
See you soon. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.